Good evening. The meeting of the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District 200 is called to order at 6:30 PM. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying here.
Dr. Kara Barthbagen. Scott Gardner.
Here.
Brad Groupie.
Here.
Sam Kimpton.
Here.
Pam Moon.
Here.
Diana Nichols.
Here.
And Barbara Schrader is here.
Thank you. And if you will please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public recognitions and presentations. Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin, and he will share those with board members at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes and one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. And first is Sedalia School District Foundation.
Just have a couple of short things. First of all, we're preparing for our annual all-staff breakfast that's going to occur later in the month of August. We will make sure that we have plenty of bacon, but it looks like we are going to be over at the Junior High this year, so that's pretty exciting. And we're looking forward to, we've got, since we are celebrating the 100-year anniversary, I think we plan on some more prizes for those that attend the breakfast. So if we have staff that want to come to the breakfast and select a prize from our prize board, that's the only way you get a prize, is to show up for the breakfast, just, you know, just saying. Also, we'll be participating in that, and you'll hear more about it later, but the Central Bank blood drive, the Sedalia School District Foundation will be participating in that. I belong, I'm kind of involved in another foundation that's got a lot of smack talk going on about who's going to win the Central Bank blood donation contest. And so, we're going to put up, the School District Foundation, I think, is going to put up a prize or split some prize money with the district if you'll help us get to our goal. So, we're excited about seeing what's going to happen there. And then that's, I think that's all I have for this month. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. NEA?
Good evening. Just a couple of things. A few updates first, planning for back to school. Mrs. Brownfield emailed me inviting us to speak at the new teacher, one of the new teacher days, as well as Mrs. Alexander, she also invited us to speak at the SCEA new staff lunch. And so, I will not be there. I'm in St. Louis on some EOC questions. So Josh Heimsoft will be present at both of those to help get recruitment and let our newbies know what we're about. I do plan on speaking, assuming that it's the same as it's been in years past. I do plan on speaking at the new, or at the all-staff meeting. We're going to hand out some Amazon gift cards, going to do a drawing for that, just like we did last year, for teachers and staff to be able to spend on their classrooms, or more importantly, themselves, for a little self-care for the beginning of school. Other than that, we're still discussing goals and things that we want to discuss with you guys throughout this year. Last month, I mentioned mental health and things like that for our staff, and I'll shout out Mr. Norton. The next morning, I had an email in my mailbox at an ungodly hour in the morning, and it, him saying, hey, what are those strategies? Okay? And so, I gave him a list, several items, and may not be exactly what he was looking for, but I still appreciate him reaching out. I hope that's the start of a good working relationship on how we can tackle some of these issues. The thing I wanted to talk with you guys about today is what we can do to keep our best in the classroom. This isn't something that's just for Sedalia 200, but really all over education, we almost incentivize getting out of the classroom in some capacity, whether it's a promotion of some sort. A lot of people may leave the classroom for things like opportunities or leadership. Well, how do we provide that for teachers in the classroom? How do we give them that respect? Maybe it's money. You know, I know administrators are going to make more money, that's fine, I'm never going to argue against that, but, you know, move onto a coaching role and they get a category-one stipend. So how do we get those category-one stipends to our teachers who are working outside of their contract hours? Or maybe it's things like the flexibility in the schedule, you know, being able to use the restroom when you want, or a longer lunch, these things that are always told this is just what it is, what it's like for teachers. How can we eliminate that so that it's an incentive to stay in the classroom? Because I think we all can agree here that our purpose is our students. They're the most important people here. So then next in line is our teachers and staff who are directly with them every single day, every single minute of every single day. So how do we keep our best people with our most important people? I think if we sum it up that way, we can have some really interesting and innovative conversations on how to make sure that we're keeping those best people around our most important people. So, another thing that we're going to look at, discussing with you guys like we always have for this upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. SCEA?
Good evening. My name is Jordan Fields, and I'm speaking on behalf of SCEA tonight. Just a few summer updates. About 10 days ago, myself, our vice president, and our treasurer, were able to attend the MST leadership conference held in Columbia. This is my third year attending that conference, and I always feel like I come back with good ideas and things that I can implement directly into our district, so that's very exciting. We are getting ready for the back-to-school new staff luncheon, which will be on August 9th, not in the middle of the night, if you read the first email, but during the day. Please join us. We're partnering with El Tapatio again for catering, so that's always really easy to work with, the Maron family's very good to us. And then, sorry. Oh, my last comment was, I have been praising all the work that's been done around Horse Man, which is my home school, to other people in the district, and I have been getting the same feedback from them, that our buildings are looking really clean, really ready. I mean, my room is sparkling, and I'm an art teacher, so that doesn't usually happen without glitter. So it's just been very exciting to hear that kind of feedback, and I feel like it's amping up the good vibes for our new school year. So SCEA is very excited to get back, and we hope that you guys are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brownfield, discussing the seal of biliteracy.
We had seven students qualify for the seal of biliteracy to be able to put that seal on their diploma this year at graduation, so we're very excited about that. And I have Ms. Eppenauer and Ms. Lackey to share a little bit more with you and to provide some certificates.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Eppenauer. I'm one of your Spanish teachers. This is Melissa Lackey, one of our ESL teachers. And as Ms. Brownfield told you, we had seven seniors that earned the seal of biliteracy this year. The seal of biliteracy is an initiative, and as soon as the state of Missouri offered it, Smith Cotton was right in that first group, offering the seal of biliteracy to our students who are fluent in more than one language. They have to prove that. It's multi-steps. They have to prove it with a qualifying exam score in English, such as the ACT, the access, or the EOC. They also have to prove it through a qualifying score in four areas in that second, and sometimes third and fourth. We even had one student a few years ago who qualified in five languages. So that test has a speaking, a reading, a listening, and a writing part. They also have to do 50 hours of community service or tutoring that is language-related, and write an essay. So it's multi-steps, and we're really proud of these students. So I'm going to read some names for you. We have a few of them that were able to make it here tonight, and I'll ask Ms. Lackey to hand these out, if the students, when you hear your name, would come forward. We have, this year, Carmen Ventura Velasquez, Dolina Pochico, Sonia Nava, Tatiana Peschoff, Fernando Nando, Stephanie Diaz, and Mario Rojas Murillo. So we thank you for your support.
Congratulations to each of you. Girls' state recognitions. Dr. Fraley.
Yeah, I wanted to recognize that the Sedalia 200 School District received some thank yous. One, from the organization of Girls' State American Legion Auxiliary of Missouri for participation and sponsorship, and in particular, from two of our female students, Ms. Addison Lyles and Ms. Bailey Spencer, and they both crafted a handwritten thank you to the Sedalia District. I wanted you guys to be aware of that, and be able to read those thank yous.
And they were very nice, well-written. And now, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.16, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 4.17, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.17?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 4.17, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.17?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 4.18 is payment of bills with Ms. Moon abstaining, do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item 4.18?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to items for decision. Ms. Brownfield, the ACT district testing program agreement.
We are requesting to bring back the ACT testing to our students, which will look a little bit different. If you remember, five, six, maybe seven years ago, the state, we ACT tested all of our juniors, and the state funded that. Then we continued, when the state discontinued the funding, we continued as a district to move forward with ACT. And then there's been several years where we have not. We are hoping to get your approval to bring back ACT to support our students. It'll be, look a little bit different, it won't necessarily be all juniors. We're hoping to provide the assessment that best meets the student's future. So for those going into college versus those going into the workforce, there's different assessment types for each path. We will be counseling and working with those students as they work through to decide which path and which assessment is going to be the best for them. And it will also provide external data for us as we continue moving forward with our innovation waiver and our Student Success Ready Network.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brownfield?
It's brutal.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And it, motion approved. Thank you. For the next item, branding and logos, we are going to exit the stage and see it on the big screen.
All right, we have several, or a few months ago, I think it was, the Board of Education approved the development of a committee of various stakeholders of the district to work with Callis and Associates to develop, to brand standards for our district, in particular to kind of, one, bring us all together, but at the same time differentiate between the district itself and Smith Cotton High School. Part of the investigation, surveying process, through the analysis from Callis, showed us that there wasn't really a distinguishing, distinguishable, Smith Cotton High School and Sedalia 200 were kind of blended together. They're two separate entities, of course, one being the parent of the other. So we successfully done that, we have some results, and I think you'll be fairly excited. I'm excited to display this to the public for the first time. Many in this audience have been privy to a little preview, so here we go. So one of the catchlines that we've kind of come up with over the past years, that we wanted to, we are responsible for providing the path of opportunity. That's kind of Sedalia 200's new slogan, new phrase, providing a path of opportunity. It's, we want to lay the groundwork, the foundation, give our students, our families, the opportunity to be successful. Obviously, you cannot do that for an individual, they have to take that responsibility on themselves at some point in time, and put a little work and effort in, but we're going to make sure that the opportunity is there for them to succeed and to flourish. So, as a, as a committee, as a group, and working with Callis, we decided the path was the focal point, and of course, over the hill, and through the trees, and across the dale, and hopefully to a successful, happy, rich life, whatever that means to the individual. You will see that we were, actually, a lot of people probably don't understand how old we are. And the Sedalia School District was founded in 1867, if memory serves me right, and somebody can fact-check me, I might be wrong, but something like, it was either like $25,000 or $30,000, something like that, was raised to get it off the ground. So, there you go. We also developed, were font standards that will be incorporated. The district will purchase those fonts, and then incorporate that into our official documentation. This is kind of what the committee developed from a mission standpoint, and our vision, to our values, to our brand platform. Taking the various concepts and ideals that we possess, and putting them down, and transferring those to a brand standard platform. Questions at this point? Is our gold or black? EMS F548? Is that a pantom, or pantomga? If I had this documentation, would I get? Different grayscales, color variations, background variations? I'm sorry. Various examples, get into the technical aspects of it. What everybody's waiting for? There's the new tiger for Sedalia Smith Cotton High School. I think, I think he looks quite cuddly myself, I don't know. He may be a little bit on the mean side, I hope he is, I hope our football team's a little mean this year.
And that tiger, that logo with the body, I don't know if it's sugar, and that would be used by all of the schools?
That is correct. Yes, because we are all, we decided several years ago that we'd all be tigers.
Right.
So, we do not go back on that decision. So all the schools will be tigers, will feature this, this particular mascot. That's how, look at the different color backgrounds, and the grayscale again. This is our full-body version. We had transposed the tail to an S, so it went the other direction. We thought that might be a little neat caveat for Sedalia slash Smith Cotton, but it looked completely weird. It really did. It just did not look like a tiger would look whatsoever. These are just our word marks, what it'll look like in font now, have that on our letter heads. Different ways to incorporate with the name. And again, technical information. Now, once the board were officially approved this this evening, is my hope, then these standards will be sent to our legal counsel, where they will start the process of branding us as a copyright, copyright, sorry, and trademarking, so we can have complete control and ownership of these images, which is, in my opinion, very important. Any other questions at this time?
Yeah.
Well, thanks to the committee, they did a lot of hard work, and Callis and Associates held our hand through that process, so it was great.
I know that there's always a lot of time and effort put in, if you're asked to serve on a committee like this, to decide something for the district, so definitely appreciate all those committee members that put time in on that.
And I, before we take a vote on this, if I could publicly make mention that we, we will slowly transition ourselves out of the old, we have a lot of things up and, you know, on walls, on shirts, et cetera, et cetera, and we'll take our time getting, getting all that transitioned over the next year or so.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Fraley? I'll ask for a motion to approve the branding guidelines, fonts, colors, and logos as presented in the district in moving forward with acquiring copyright and trademark rights as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Very good. And next is Ms. Brownfield with Ukraine refugee grant information.
Yes, we were very pleased to hear that we were awarded the Ukraine grant again for refugees. In the past two years, the first grant was around 60,000, the second grant was around 80,000. This year, because of our growing numbers, the 273,957. So that was a significant change for us.
Good.
And very much needed for us to be able to support our students, so that will continue to support our liaison position with the additional one, which we've had some feelers out on that, so some people are interested there, along with the ongoing professional development and being able to provide that high-quality PD that we've been doing, and also our EL summer camp, we've had two years of that now, so this will also help support those costs as well, with additional transportation. So we're very excited for this.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield?
I'm sorry, I should know this, but is this a federal grant?
This is, yes.
Really?
This is federal, through the Refugee, the Office of Refugees.
All 50 states, anybody that applies?
This is Missouri's distribution of that, but yes, yes.
Was there any other?
So each state has their own allocation based on the number of refugees, and then based on the number of refugees we support, then it is based that way.
Do you know how many were?
So I can't speak to what the other states have, but...
Do you know how many were given out in the state, or if there's anybody larger than us?
I do not, but I can find out.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That's obviously a growing population in our area.
Yes.
Just curious.
We're just a heavy area, for sure, and we're very fortunate to have someone at Dussie that had worked at Dussie, who retired and then now works in the Office of Refugees. So, you know, we've worked, had had a relationship with him for a while, and so he's very good to communicate, and likewise, so that we can make sure we have the best opportunities, so.
Wow. Thank you. Thanks for the info.
Any other questions for Ms. Brownfield? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Ukraine refugee grant as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All not in favor, say nay. That is approved. Thank you. And moving to Mr. Pyle for a PCE construction change order.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to visit with our board tonight on the change order for PCE construction for work at the middle school, in the amount of $63,688.90. We met as a district team in Hollison Miller recently, and discussed the cost of replacing the six, excuse me, existing basketball goals in the former gymnasium that we're remodeling. And after the two new goals were put up in our new gym, the auxiliary gym, we decided that it would look more complete. When we first met, we thought, well, we can get by with those goals, but after looking and reviewing, we felt like this would be the best move to go on and ask to replace those as well. So, just wanted to ask the board for, and make a recommendation, if we can move forward and with this change order in the amount of $63,688.90, to remove those six existing basketball goals and replace them with new goals at the SMS Gymnasium.
Are the old goal, are the old basketball goals just junk, or can they be repurposed, or?
They're, they're the original goals there, Mr. Gardner, so they're still, they do function, it's just something that the district could decide to surplus. It's just something that the district could decide to surplus.
They, they are fifty years old, they're original. We have talked about checking with Skyline and Parkview, talked to Mr. Simon about can those rafters hold those goals, potentially repurpose them as a handy down to elementary level? But I don't know if that's possible yet. If not, I'll reach out to various school districts if somebody wants to buy them. If not, they'll, they'll be scrapped, the metal.
Do they be scrapped or made surplus?
Correct, either.
Yeah, there's, there, there are plenty of places around here that would, you know, even though they're fifty years old, they'll, they'll take it.
Well, they require, it's not something you mount on a wall, they have to be mounted from rafters, steel metal beams. So, I don't, you know, that would definitely limit the, the usage.
Any other questions for Dr. Fraley?
Move its approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle again with the special education program evaluation?
Yes, our Board of Education had the opportunity to look through our program evaluation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Also included the annual termination letter from DUCY to kind of explain the regulatory requirements for the program. I just wanted to say thanks publicly and to our board tonight for our team. As you could see, the increase in numbers, we were up eighteen more students again this past school year, and that's, that's been the trend for the past ten years in special education. So, we were at fourteen point three percent of our students in the K twelve level, had met some kind of criteria for special education. So, our entire team, from our paras, to our teachers, to our special ed coordinators, all support staff, and also want to compliment our regular education team for working with our team members. They include our team in professional development, and, and we look at our students with special needs as students that, that can achieve, and that's what our daily goal is, so just want to say thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
I, I'd like to add that to keep receiving exemplary marks in this department is, is very impressive. I certainly want to commend him and his team, and administrative team, the teachers, all the way down to par professionals that make that happen. That does not always happen, for sure. People, families, we know that families do come to the, the district because of our special education department and the reputation that it has. I have spoken with people at Whitman Air Force Base that they recommend Sedalia to some of their airmen that have children with special needs, because we have that reputation.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pyle? I'll ask for a motion to approve the special education program evaluation as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And Mr. Norton's not here this evening, is that what you said?
That's correct.
So, the Palin music donation, are you?
Yeah, we have a Palin music donation amount of three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for purchase or rent of a new instrumental needs as presented on behalf of Mr. Fisher and the Smith Cotton Band students. That, you hear in the background?
Yes, yes, they're practicing back there. Are there any questions regarding this donation? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Palin music donation in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for instruments for purchase or rent to our new instrumental students as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay.
Do we have to tell the band to cool it so that they, we can approve the donation?
Next on the agenda is tuition for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Dr. Fraley.
Yeah, this is a calculation that I have to make per statute, and DUCY provides a calculator tool for this. You will see on the last page of the Excel sheet, our recommended suggested basic tuition per ADA is eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents per year. There's a lot of figures that go into that calculation, based on our expenditures and our revenues. Again, that particular calculation's out of my hands, and I have to follow the state model for that. It, it did go up almost a thousand dollars from last year. That's largely due to the, the raises that we have given our staff, stu-, or teachers and staff.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? I'll ask for a motion to approve the tuition rate of eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents per student, per year, for full-time enrollment as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that passes. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley on the Shaw Sports Turf Equipment Change Order?
Yeah, we, the turf contract itself that was approved a few months ago did not include us buying. We knew we would need to buy some equipment for that turf, so a groomer, sweeper, and nailer in the amount twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
A groomer is a piece of equipment, correct?
Correct.
And the person using it is never going to be referred to as a groomer, correct?
Amen.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the Shaw Sports Turf Change Order? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that passes. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley, policy zero-three-four-two?
Yes, you have a re-adoption of policy zero-three-four-two, have to do with nepotism, conflict of interest, financial disclosure, disc-, sorry, disclosure as presented.
And anybody have any questions for Dr. Fraley? This is something the Missouri Ethics Council requires.
That is correct.
Okay. Any question?
We have to do this every two years.
Every two years, right. And this will recall, require a roll call vote when we get to that. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to re-adopt policy zero-three-four-two, nepotism, conflict of interest, financial disclosure as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And the roll call vote?
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Mrs. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader votes yes.
Very good. Thank you. And the last item under decision is the Guided Secure Entry Change Order for July.
Yes, just to clarify a little bit, well, I titled this as a change order simply because we had approved the Guided Secure Entry Plans, oh gosh, over a year ago. But in reality, the, the portion that is going to interact with our current door alarm system is what we're looking for approval for tonight. So, the initial work, the scope of work for the general contractor did not include all of the actual mechanisms and hardware that integrates this new system in with our current system. So, what you'll see this evening is the, the cost of integrating these new secure vestibules, door, door closures, intercom systems, all of this, these, the hardware and the implementation into what our current system provides us, that will allow us to, again, have the ability for our secretaries when a visitor comes to our building, there'll be a voice as well as video intercom at the very exterior, where currently there's just an intercom, it will now have a video as well. Our administrative assistants will interact with visitors at that point. They'll determine, you know, if they are allowed entry into the building, and if they are, they'll have a, a button to release that door, disengage that door, and allow the visitor to then come into the secure vestibule. Now, once inside the secure vestibule, we have alarmed and armed doors as well. So, all of this, these additions are what you're seeing here this evening and the work that Night Watch has been performing. But until we got down and went through, there were a few additions as we went through these, these plans that were done well over a year ago when this went out to bid. There were some additions when we went through with a fine-tooth comb and identified some areas where initially the discussion was we would have a, a transaction window in some of the secure vestibules, but that would have required larger additions at Parkview and Skyline. So, instead, there's just a single door that, once you come into the secure vestibule, then you would be allowed to come into the office space if the administrative assistant buzzes you through and into the school, the actual school building. So, we had to add an intercom in those secure vestibules. So, a few changes, a few additions to the original plans that were bid out. But again, this is all the hardware and mechanisms to install this and integrate it with our current alarm system that we have in our buildings. So, it enhances our secure entries. The construction that has gone on this summer, all of these locations has added doors, has added, again, alarmed and controlled access doors that are all needing these, what you see here, the modules and all of the parts and pieces to make them work and function properly. So, it's part of the overall plan, but again, was not in the initial scope of work presented to the general contractor. So, it came as a little bit of a surprise, but Dr. Fraley assured me this is how it's been done when we've done these construction projects previously, and so just, I probably shouldn't have called it a change order. But again, what you see, and you may have seen, there were changes that went to this after the initial packet was sent out as Whittier, in the secure vestibule that Whittier was left off initially, so that was added on. And so, depending on if you had a printed copy, the amount that you may have on there might be different from the initial that was sent out. The total cost of the change order, or for the, this work to be completed by Night Watch, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And you'll see a breakdown there in thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars in labor and ninety thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars in parts and materials, for a total, again, of a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and two. So, the recommendation is to ask for approval of this, or this change order for Night Watch Security and Telephone to complete and install the additional components as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Curry?
Move its approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. This is approved. Thank you. And the next three items are for discussion, and we are going to move off the stage for the organ donor and Missouri Statute one-seven zero point three-one-one presentation.
Okay, the district received communication from this organization, LearnLifesavers.com, referencing Missouri Law one-seven, one-seven zero point three-one-one, enacted two thousand and eighteen. It does require the district to view and discuss the video that you're about to watch and decide whether or not they want to, the board wants to take the next step as to considering implementation of LearnLifesavers.com in our high school.
My name is Ken Harper, and I'm a pro-founder and director of education for Gift of Life in Kansas City. In two thousand and eighteen, I've always passed the last such present to school boards as sacred survey about LearnLifesavers.com. But to the large suburban school districts presenting in person is nearly impossible. So, please accept this video presentation as a substitute for being there in person. For the next five minutes, I will share information about LearnLifesavers.com, which is a free, unbiased, thirty-minute online teacher's self-guided lesson, which provides education about organ eye and tissue donation. High school students need to be educated about donation when they apply for or renew their driver's license, and sharing their decision with a loved one is the most important step regarding donation. The goal of LearnLifesavers.com is to educate students about the question, "Do you want to be a donor?" So, when they apply for their driver's license or state ID, they can make an informed decision. This educational effort about donation is for lives saved and healed through organ eye and tissue donation, for the individuals waiting for a life-saving or life-healing transplant, and for individuals who die every day waiting for a life-saving transplant. LearnLifesavers.com was developed to educate all students in the state of Missouri about donation. LearnLifesavers.com is eight easy steps in thirty minutes. Teachers will engage their students with provided questions and statements, then they will show a short video, then the teachers will ask students true-false questions, and the students will answer verbally. The teachers will then show a second short video, ask students true-false questions, and the students answer verbally. Additional resources are provided for teachers to enhance student learning, and at the end of the lesson, there's an easy way to report basic data, which includes teacher's name and email, school name and address, class subject, number of students reached, and the date LearnLifesavers.com was presented. No information is collected about students, and the collected data is never shared. This data is important for tracking outcomes. There's also an option for a student self-guided lesson. LearnLifesavers.com relates to specific grade level expectations and aligns with the Missouri learning standards, giving your school district the flexibility to provide the education in one or more subject areas or courses. LearnLifesavers.com may be used in health, science, or even partnered with the CPR mandate. You know your school community, therefore you should decide where it fits best in your high school. LearnLifesavers.com may be used in all high school grade levels. Within the supporting materials that have been provided is a list of school districts in Missouri that are educating their high school students about organ eye and tissue donation. I've also provided commonly asked questions regarding organ donation. After the board votes, your superintendent will complete the letter of participation form and send it to me for our records. My husband and I founded the nonprofit Gift of Life, located in Kansas City twenty-five years ago. LearnLifesavers.com was modeled after our Lifesavers High School program, which offers in-person presentations. Gift of Life has educated over four hundred and fifty thousand high school students and their families. Our son Luke received a life-saving liver transplant at eleven months old. He was given two years to live without an organ donor. He will soon turn twenty-nine. I will be forever grateful to his donor family for giving him a second chance. Missouri can be a national leader in educating high school students about organ eye and tissue donation. Please vote in favor to implement LearnLifesavers.com, because together we can save one life at a time.
So, as was mentioned, this is under discussion tonight, there won't be a decision made until next month. There won't be a decision made until next month. Any comments, thoughts, anybody wants to share tonight? Just to say it?
So, they're recommending all the way, all levels of high school?
They, it, "high school students" is how they said it. So, I mean, how I interpreted that, it's, you're 16, you know, before you get your license, and that's when you actually declare that you're an organ donor. So, I'm...
So, they're wanting to catch them before they go make that decision at the...
Yeah.
Okay.
The students in Missouri are asked by the state their wishes regarding donation at the age of 15 when receiving their permit, and then again at age 16 when receiving their driver's license.
I, I'm just gonna say this to be saying it. I'm a huge advocate for organ donor, you know, to sign up, because I have been, I've a benefit from receiving a cornea transplant several years ago and have vision in my left eye somewhat, better than what it was before. But I also feel like this is something, I know with my own daughters, we had that discussion as a family before they got their permit and got their driver's license. I'm kinda on the fence for that reason, because I do feel like this is something I would hope parents would start the discussion with, with their teenagers, as they move on to the responsibility of driving and getting their driver's license. So, I'm kinda straddling that fence, even though I'm a huge advocate for it. I do feel like that might be something parents would prefer to initiate the conversation, because it is a personal...
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay. So, any other comments? We'll bring it back next month to make that decision, or Mr. Kimpton?
I just read in the material, and I just heard her say that there was a list of, what I believe, other schools in Missouri.
It wasn't in our packet.
Was it given to...
There's a link in the packet.
Okay.
Okay, I missed that. What he's talking about, there's a list of other schools in the state of Missouri that have implemented this program within their, within their school district. So, any other comments, questions to bring forth? Okay, we'll see this next month, thank you. Secondary curriculum updates, Ms. Brownfield?
As you are aware, curriculum is never done, and nor do we want it to be, honestly. We want to continue to improve and realign and reevaluate to provide our students with the best learning opportunities available. So, what you have before you are links to the curriculum that we will be updating, and there will be more in future months to come. Several of those changes include government, for example, because it went from a semester class to a year-long course, so the unit structures changed. Content is essentially the same, but evolved some of those units to be a little more robust and go a little deeper with the allowed time. That is also the case with physics and chemistry, so those did not shift as far as timelines, but the reorganization, so the content is essentially the same. What we're asking for, when we bring curriculum for you to do, is to approve unit structures and standard alignment. The other pieces of that, I would say, if you've looked at these documents, the right-hand column with the curriculum supports and supporting documents, those continuously change, and that, that's always ongoing. Also, just ELA for the high school, you'll see junior high very soon as well. The last time ELA was board-approved was 2018, and so we want to make sure that that was when we kind of re-shifted to those new Missouri learning standards, because we've learned more about the standards, and we've continued to evolve the units. That's why this is being brought to you as well, it's just been updated since then. So, career education had new standards, so we realigned to the new standards for the National MBEA standards. And, let's see, and the FACS class, the International Foods, was also a realignment restructuring.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? We will bring this back next month for approval. And next is Mr. Pyle with new bid projects.
Yes, the district plans to move forward with items designated and a long-range facilities planning, so tonight is bringing this as a discussion item in hopes that we can bring it back in the next month for some decisions. So, I'll update our audience and those watching on projects that we hope to pursue. Project number one would be the SMS Phase II renovation and Smith Cotton Junior High School gym annex renovation, and this will include work at SMS, Hartview, and Skyline on the foundation repairs that we've discussed throughout the year, through the past school year, on things that we've noticed there. Bid details were shared out July 24. August 16 would be a bid opening, so that would allow us to bring it back to the board for approval if we choose to do that. Total estimated cost of project one would be $7.2 million. Project two is Smith Cotton Junior High School gym annex and SMS roof replacements, and that would also include Washington Horseman and Heber Hunt mason repairs. And it would be the same timeline on coming back in August. That project one would possibly start in the fall, and we would work through a plan to get some of that done before we have the grade level shift. So, I should have mentioned that up top on project one before our fourth graders would move out. Go down to project three, and this would be an improvement for restroom and plumbing renovations at Heber Hunt, Horseman, and Washington, and this would also include an alternate bid for Jenny Jane Stadium locker rooms, flooring and locker renovations. And that is a little bit later in the school year, where we'd come back in October with that, if we're able to move forward. So, that project is estimated cost through Hollison Miller at $3 million. So, I wanted to make the board aware that we'll bring this back after bid openings and pre-bid meetings.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
I want to comment that we're very hopeful, you know, when we did, you know, the current renovations taking place for guided secure entry systems and the renovation of the SMS pool, the SMS gymnasium, those bids came in almost half of what was anticipated. So, I've got my toes crossed inside my shoes that these bids might come in similarly. That would be wonderful.
Be nice.
Should they not, I mean, these are, these are projects that we identified over the last couple of years in long-range plan that need done. And I hope that we can move forward aggressively with those plans. It may be, I want you to know that I've already spoken to L.J. Hart again, and remember, we had talked about additional fundings. So, depending on where these bids come in, is what, I'll try to make a decision of whether or not I recommend us to go out for another 10 or 15 million in lease certificate funding.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle or Dr. Fraley? We'll see that, I guess, two of them next month and the other one in October.
Yes.
Okay.
District's making great strides across the all buildings.
Lots going on, yeah.
Getting in touch, so...
It's exciting. Moving on to information, Mr. Pyle, the structural engineering assessment update.
Yes, I wanted to be just transparent with the board on this one and kinda update everyone. Our Board of Education reviewed an item during the June meeting concerning that structural assessment performed by STAND, the structural engineering team. They looked at Washington Horseman and Smith Cotton Junior High. In that discussion that night, I talked about maybe pursuing bids to complete that work. After meeting further with Hollison Miller and knowing Richie Simons and our maintenance abilities team, we feel like that we can approach that work through our maintenance team with some support from MTS, which is a name familiar to our Board of Education that's done work at the junior high and some of these other buildings as well, so we may be able, and that is our plan, to not actually have to pursue the bid process there. So, just wanted to be, have some closure with our board on that, that that's the plan, so you didn't think that we hadn't moved forward with that.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? Thank you. Ms. Brownfield, the culture and climate survey data?
So, this particular survey is the one that we do in conjunction with MSIP-6, and we report to DUCY. It consists of data coming from staff and students and our families within our district. We highlighted some bullet points for you, but the data is there also to do a deeper dive. But we did have staff reported over 80% agreeing with the district providing high-quality education, safe schools, feeling supported in their roles, and their ability to have positive effect on student performance. We felt like that was a positive. Families averaged over 70% agreeing that the district provides a safety, or safe educational support and students being treated fairly. And we, students at both the secondary and elementary level were also very positive with responses to safety, so those correlated from what parents said in students. We did find a growth area for the secondary level, students feeling like their voices are heard, so that's something that we can work on at the secondary level to continue that, those conversations. And students at the elementary level, and keep in mind, those were, the survey was given to third, fourth, and fifth grade, and so that was one area potentially for growth with elementary, is students felt like during disagreements, they're not sure, frustration on how to deal with their peers. So, that's something we can continue to work on. And there was a discrepancy in staff reporting, 87% agreeing that we provide high-quality education. Our families brought that in at 55%. So, wanting to dig in a little bit deeper, that actually correlates with one of our other surveys, where our staff also feels like maybe we need to communicate more with our families to what opportunities and things that there are available. So, that kind of supports that information as well.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? Thank you. And the Student Ready Success Network?
Lots of data today. So, this is also data that was given to students, admin, and teachers. This is as we continue our process with moving forward with the Student Success Ready Network, Marzano Research, which is a different entity, but that's part of us getting some initial data as we move forward with this next year of PD for staff, learning proficiency scales, learning competency-based education, so this kind of is just some base data for us.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? And joining her at the podium for this presentation is Ms. Gilmore on the instructional survey data.
Good evening. Every year, Ms. Brownfield and myself send out an instructional staff survey to our instructional staff K-12, sorry, pre-K-12, just to get feedback in regards to professional development, curriculum, all the, all the areas, family engagement. And so, this data, we look at every single question, every single feedback, and this data helps drive our instruction for the following school year, our professional development. And so, we've kind of summarized a little bit in regards to each survey. It is a little bit different from the surveys I send out to Ms. Brownfield, same information, just different professional development geared towards our age level. But elementary felt that to continue our workshop model, which is where they get to select the different types of sessions that they get to attend. So, when you go to a conference, you get to select the different sessions. And so, I have brought that to our district, and that was overwhelmingly positive that they got to select what they needed. And our K-5 buildings have weekly team meetings where they meet with the building administrator and the instructional coaches as a grade level, and so they have professional development during that. So, those two approaches, they would like to continue seeing. Ongoing PD is something we hear every year. We just don't want something one and not hear it for the rest of the school year. So, continuing that, continuing with out-of-district professional development, you know, picking other people's brains and what they're doing, and thinking smarter, not harder, and how we can do that in Sedalia moving forward. So, additional topics for professional development in elementary this coming up year. We've had an influx, as you know, with English language learner students, and so we want to bring more ELPD. So, I will work with Ms. Brownfield in how to provide that for our pre-K through 5 teachers, content-specific, and continuing differentiate, differentiated PD. Some things that, you know, I looked at last year, sorry, several years ago, is providing professional development for content, for electives, for reading teachers, for math teachers, et cetera, so that they're walking out of that professional development session and thinking that they are ready to, they got something from that, and they're ready to implement that moving forward the next school day. So, that's kind of a goal of mine moving forward. Also, in terms of family engagement, I feel like our elementary buildings do a phenomenal job with family engagement. Our title nights are a great way to involve our families, so continuing to do that throughout the school years.
We had some very similar feedback. Our, we have had the opportunity the last few years to bring in outside experts for professional development to the secondary level, and that was one thing that was noted to continue out-of-district professional development when possible. That is more expensive at times, but I think with the content experts at secondary and them honing in on their particular content, that's why that was probably so highly encouraged. Also, when asked, follow-up question to PD that was needed, it was also asked of when that method, what is your preferred method? Secondary overwhelmingly said small group during plan times is when they prefer to have PD. PD topics, the number one topic of requested PD was proficiency scales, so that goes along with our competency-based education and what we're doing with innovation waiver, mastery learning, just as Devin said, ongoing content-specific PD, and then there's some additional tech PD that they would like to continue as well. So, overall, staff believes that the district does set high expectations for student achievement, so it was nice to see how that was parallel with the other surveys, as well as continue curriculum revisions, that that's a necessity to continue to ongoing and do that. But this is where the last bullet there, that they do, staff does believe that we need to improve parent communication regarding our academic subjects and what we teach, which is what I was mentioning earlier, that kind of supported the other survey as well. So, we need to work in that area.
Any questions for Ms. Gilmore or Ms. Brownfield regarding...
I'd like to say something. My daughter went to the Get Your Teach On, and I know I spoke with Dr. Fraley, that this year was really hard for my daughter at sixth grade. She was, has nine, nine years of teaching left and said she didn't know she'd be able to make it the next nine. But after she went to this professional development, she is already so ramped up, I mean, that's all she talks about. So, I just want to say thank you guys for sending her and all the other people that got to go to this fantastic professional development, because it really sparked a little something extra for her.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. I've seen a lot of positive comments about that particular opportunity on social media, so that is definitely a good feeling. Thank you, Pam.
The praiseings of just what they can take back, they're ready to go tomorrow and implement, and that excites us, because, and then it, you know, it bleeds into your buildings, and then you're like, whoa, what did you get here? You know, how did you do that? So, I think that is a great professional development opportunity. And so, we ask those people that attend to out-of-district professional development to come back and share your popcorn with your building and with your district. And so, during, like, the workshop models, we had staff in elementary, I think Ms. Hannah Brick presented last month on Letitia Tad's writing sessions, and so that was a Get Your Teach On strategy also. So, she also presented that in her session. So, it's a lot of sharing your popcorn, which is great.
That's good, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, ladies. And the last item for this evening is Ms. Gilmore, standards-based grading for elementary K-5.
Yeah, so we have some exciting news happening with our grading system in grades K through 5. We are moving to a solely-based, standard-based grading with our innovation process, moving forward with our innovation waiver and our Marzano training. Currently, or last, as of last year, for many years, as I can remember, we were running two systems. So, my kindergarten and first grade were standard-based, and I attached a grade card for an example for you guys to see what that looked like last year. In grades second, third, and fourth grade, they... Um, in grades second, third, and fourth grade, they were doing two systems. They were doing a letter grade system, uh, which gave, gave them a traditional letter grade, A, B, C, D, F, and then they also did standards, uh, which gave them a three, which is on grade level, a two, which is approaching, and a one, um, which is below grade level. And then it started back with fifth grade, starting with the letter grades. And so next year, moving, or, sorry, this school year, moving forward, we are going K-five, um, with standard-based grading, and, and the goal for this is to really document academic success, um, and to show where, um, children's, uh, students' strengths and areas of growth are, um, for priority standards, um, for each grade level. So we're very excited with this. Um, our team is learning from Marzano, uh, more information in regards to standard-based, um, so we look forward to, to that professional development as well, um, moving forward.
Any questions for Ms. Gilmore regarding this? Okay, thank you. And that concludes our agenda for the evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed executive session?
Move to adjourn the regu- regular session meeting and notices hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District two hundred have duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by section six ten dot zero two one RSMO, subsection one, negations three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting, thirteen personnel records, fourteen records which are protected, eighteen public safety or law enforcement, and nineteen security system and structural plans. By law of the Missouri statutes, we'll conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote?
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Have a great week, thank you.